Okay, I'd like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting of June 15, 2020. My little script I have to read here. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Appreciate everyone's patience as we try to work through this. The planning commissioners and city staff are all participating from remote locations. All votes will be taken by rule call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city dot org forward slash virtual meeting. At the screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions on the screen under the sign up to speak tab. And once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed. So please make sure you visit malibu city.org forward slash virtual meeting early to download, uh, download the Zoom applications, sign up to speak. The recording secretary will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called. So you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. All right. So can we call the roll, please?
Commissioner Euring?
Here.
Commissioner Wild?
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Here.
Chair Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Marks? Still absent. Uh, you have a quorum with Commissioner Marks absent.
Okay. So we're looking for a motion to, uh, on the approval of the agenda. John, you-
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as staff recommends with item A 3A3 continued to July 20th, 2020. Item 4A continued to a date uncertain. And I'd like to move item 3B4 to be held after 4B.
After 4B. Why would that be?
Because I have to recuse myself.
On 3B4? Well, you know, John, it's one thing if you're, it were all down at City Hall and you have to, you know, you're sit out in the lobby, but here you, all you have to do is just mute your uh, microphone and turn your mic, your mic off. So, uh, or turn your, your picture off. So it's really, I mean, you-
How do I do that?
Huh?
I don't know how to turn my picture off. If Alex can do it, fine.
Yeah, I think that that's really the better way to do it. People rely on these timing things and and there's no sense in changing it if we don't have to for some reason.
Can Alex turn it off for me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, not now.
Okay. So then that your motion is without that last move then?
Is that- Right.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
And there's Chris Marks. Good. All in favor say, uh, well, I'm gonna take a roll. Let's call the roll, please.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes, sir. Here. Is this, uh-
This is, this is our motion on the agenda, the approval of the agenda, Chris.
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Both here and yes.
Commissioner Wild?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, Kathleen, can we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on June 5th, 2020, with the amended agenda posted on June 11th, 2020.
Okay, thank you. That takes us to item two, written in oral communications from the public. Kathleen, do we have anybody who's signed up to make a presentation on items not on the agenda?
We do not.
All right. As now we're at two, item 2B, planning commission and staff-
One, one quick, sorry, interruption. I know that, um, there was a public submission on item 2A. If I remember correctly, that had come in in writing. We don't need to acknowledge that if there's no one to speak to it, correct?
That's, that's my understanding. Yeah, Trevor-
What came in?
Uh, there was, uh, I just remember something where it had been submitted by email and it had a dash 2A at the end of it. Um, if there's no one to speak to it, we just, it'll just be just in writing.
Right.
Okay, sorry, sorry to interrupt.
No problem. That's, we're now at, uh, item 2B, planning commission and staff comments and inquiries. Uh, commissioners, uh, let's start with you, Chris. You got any comments?
I do, indeed I do. I just admitted myself. So, um, I did wanna, there, there was, uh, some questions which had come up, I think, kinda after the last meeting, and I did wanna get a little bit of clarification from staff just to make sure that I've got the right perspective and that, um, that, you know, we, we kind of are, um, aware of, of kind of where things fall. Um, generally speaking, in looking specifically at Woolsey rebuilds, and I think this is directed either to, um, probably Richard or Bonnie. Um, with the way I perceive it and, uh, you know, just kind of to a simplified statement, there are kind of three, um, broad classes of rebuilds. Hundred and ten percent or less, full fee waives, uh, full of waiver fees, no planning commission review. Then a second class is from a hundred and ten percent to a hundred and fifty percent, one fifty percent of existing structure. There, the applicant does pay the fees, but they don't have a planning commission review because it's treated like a fifty percent remodel. And the third class is anything a hundred and fifty percent of original or larger, their applicant pays fees and has a full CDP or ACDP review. I just wanna clarify, are those kind of three fair buckets that, that, that the work falls into?
I'm gonna, Richard, do that one.
Thank you.
Generally speaking, yes, there are some caveats, of course, because it has to be consistent with the coastal act. So there are some exemptions if they don't qualify for, then it automatically becomes a CDP. If it's over 10%, but generally, yes.
Okay. And, and part of the reason I bring that up was because there were, um, there was some feedback, um, I had based, basically about, um, um, what projects will be subject to basically being treated as though it's a new CDP. Anything over the one fifty would, would be treated as such. So I just wanted to clarify that. Then, um, another bit, and this is probably directed more to Trevor or Bonnie. Um, the, the, the Zoom experience, I, I know kind of, and we, we've had some discussion on this historically, and so I'm kind of resurrecting something we touched before. But the Zoom experience versus the in-person, you know, in-city hall experience. Obviously, in city hall, if somebody is like fidgeting in their chair and raising their hand and kind of waving around, it's, it's obvious that that person is trying to get attention to speak. Zoom has a different model, you know, you just have a, like a, uh, like a kind of a hand wave type of thing, or, you know, uh, what, you know, some type of, uh, some type of messaging through Zoom. What's the expectation the public should have at the different phases of public comment, et cetera? So that there's clarity on, on when an applicant and/or the public should really focus on getting, getting their voice heard, just so there's clarity on expectations there.
Sure. Trevor?
Again, I can pick it up. So the, the city's tried to make some very, uh, specific guidelines to guide people and make it as simple as possible and avoid as many techno- technological problems that we have with this forum and format that we have. So what we guaranteed everyone is that, you know, they're have the chance to speak for their three minutes, uh, when they're called upon. And we've had enough trouble trying to push that through. So, um, the, the, the chance to speak when there's deliberations going on, there is the raise your hand option on here, but it's very difficult for a lot of people to figure out how to use that. That is not a way that you're, you're not entitled to speak anyway during deliberations, and that's not something that we are, uh, telling people they can or, or should be doing. Of course, the, uh, the, the, the commission has the ability to call people up if they have questions, um, the same as if we are in, we are in regular deliberations after we close the public hearing. If they want to ask questions, the chair then has the the control of whether to, uh, to, to hear that or to ask those questions to the members of the public. So we do our best on this, but, uh, people shouldn't rely on the raise your hand tool as a, as a way to interject or that you would have some kind of right to jump in and speak during the deliberations, as frustrating as I know that can be when you hear something that you disagree with that the commission is saying.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity, and that was all I had. Chair Jennings, thank you.
Okay, David.
Uh, I just wanted to do compliment, I guess, staff or wherever it came from, city council for trying to get the short-term rental issue before us uh, in a timely manner, because I continue to get a number of, uh, communications from people who are very anxious for us to hear the public out on this issue. So thank you.
Steve? You're muted, Steve.
There we go. All right. A couple of issues. I wanna follow up on, on David's short-term rental. I got two emails today from residents, uh, two eat, two letters that were directed toward residents from a law firm that was representing an investment firm that had houses in Malibu that were, they, they were using for short-term rentals. And what this law firm did was threaten the residents with legal action if they complained again about the firm, the, these short-term rentals taking place in their neighborhood. So I agree with David. Look, this is something we gotta get our hands around because this is getting worse. And there was an article I read the other day that said, you know, Airbnb, over the course of this thing, has really got more houses rented out right now than they had before the pandemic. So I think, I agree, it's something we gotta jump on. I wanna just touch base with Richard for a second. Uh, I asked him last week to send me a listing of the houses that were larger than the ten percent house, you know, rebuild plus 10%. And the listing I get, and I should have read it closer, was only those houses we had approved. So Richard, do we not provide the city council with any kind of a forward look in terms of the houses that were, you guys are looking at that are larger than the hundred and ten percent? Is, is there not some forward-looking process, some planning process, I guess, is the way to, for, that, that gives them some insight in terms of what's going on?
We have only been reporting on what's been approved. Approved.
Okay.
But not what's in the pipeline. Not, of course, uh, folks can do public records requests. But the way our programs are set up for the purposes of tracking are for, they're associated with approvals. Uh, to do that would require us to we'd have to talk to, uh,
I, I lost whatever the last conversation was, I lost that.
Go back, Richard. Go. Give it again, Richard.
Certainly. Our software is only configured to track approvals. It's not designed to track prospective projects. We haven't set it up that way or paid for it to be set that way.
So you, so there's, right now, there's no forward look you give the city council in terms of what's coming out?
No, we have not.
That's, that's something you gotta think about. That's what planning's all about, okay? Uh, last thing is Nobu. I wanna follow up on a comment John Mazza made last, last week regarding Nobu. I sat on my deck this weekend, and I'll tell you what, PCH is packed. I mean, summer is back and whatever the, the virus is doing, people aren't paying attention. So who is in charge? Who is the person responsible for coming up with a solution for the Nobu and Soho parking issue? Who is that?
We met with both the Nobu and Soho staff last week, along with the city manager and representatives from Public Works. We are working on that. Um, there will be something happening there shortly.
But who is responsible for making that thing work? Who is the, the, the person who says, I'm gonna build the plan to make this work? Who is that?
I can jump in.
Go ahead, Trevor.
Sure. This is the applicant. It's the applicant how they wanna use their property. So it's up to them what they're willing to apply for. The city can work with them about, about solutions.
Wait, 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 Steve. Wait, one at a time. One at a time. Trevor.
So the city can't impose anything on them through an application process. They've agreed for a CUP amendment. They are responsible for, responsible for putting forward their proposal for what they wanna do. City staff has provided advice and guidance about it and evaluation of what they come back with. But in terms of the process, the applicant is the one who applies for how they wanna use their property.
Trevor, that's baloney. The question is, we've got a problem with NoHo and SoHo regarding parking. Somebody from the city has got responsibility for helping us solve that problem. Who is that? That's all I wanna know. Who's got responsibility for managing this problem?
Like I said, the applicant has control of the application. That's just how the code is set up. In terms of the experts involved, the city has Adam Chase and it has, I don't remember the other staff member who are both traffic engineers and have background on that, who are helping and proposing things there. They also have their own traffic engineers who are-
Simple question, Trevor, one at a time. Simple question. Who is in charge?
I'm trying to answer your question, Commissioner Euring.
Go ahead.
Is working directly with the owners and with Public Works and with planning to reach a solution. We realize this is a critical issue and we are working to get a solution.
Okay, so the city manager is in charge?
The city manager is everybody's boss, yes.
Okay, so is the city manager got a plan on how we're gonna solve this?
We are working on a plan right now.
And when can we see that plan?
When we're ready to show it to you.
And when will that be, do you think?
Have an answer for you today.
Okay, look, the problem is this is gonna get worse. PCH was packed this weekend.
Yes.
And it's not gonna get any better.
Everybody's aware of that and it's, it's being worked on.
Okay, so, so next meeting, maybe you come back to us with a date when we can resee the plan. Is that a possibility?
I can certainly give you an update.
Let's see what happens. Thank you very much.
John?
Well, on that same subject. They were cited six years ago for violating their CDP. It's been six years. Okay, so they have an active violation.
Giving you an update.
Bonnie, just a second.
No, no, they have an active violation. So Trevor says it's up to them. They're the ones that violated. They're the ones that do not park their parking, that do not follow their CDP or their CUP. So why is it up to them to stall? And, you know, that's, that's, if I, if I build an oil derrick in my front yard, you're not gonna let me keep it for six years.
But, Commissioner Mazza, I just addressed that issue and the commission continued this item a long time ago. We're working on the problem and I'll give you an update next week.
Okay, I have a question, though. We had a report from Richard and your traffic engineer. Oh, I'm guessing three, four months ago. Where they stated that they were gonna put in right away paddles in front of the entrances to stop the left-turn lanes into the parking lot. And there are no paddles. So is anybody following up on that?
Again, we're working on a solution and I'll have an update for you next week.
Okay.
Okay, now, my second question is I need to understand how you can do a remodel of a hundred and fifty percent, what the threshold is when we're supposed to look at the fifty percent rule on the walls?
It caught-
Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
To clear-
Wait, Bonnie.
What, what is the criteria that gets you out of not having to go to the planning commission?
Bonnie?
Sorry, I wanna sometimes move things along. Um, anyway, um, so to call it a fifty percent remodel is inaccurate. Um, this has purely to do with whether a project is a brand-new project or not. Um, you are allowed to add in addition to your property with an administrative plan review. There is, um, if, uh, you've seen several, uh, fire rebuilds where they were doing more than 10% and then also more than 50%, let's call it, and reciting the project, for example, and making other changes so that it was a brand-new project. That's the threshold that, um, requires something to come to the planning commission. If they're changing the building path, if they're making other significant changes like that.
So, uh, just to get it clear. If, if the only time you don't have to come to us is when you put her on the second floor and you're not changing your pad? Is that right?
Say that again?
Well, you said if you move your pad or you move your footprint, then you come to us. Well, that means the only time you go fifty percent bigger is when you go up, right?
No. Um, if, if a project is a brand-new, if it's a, a, a very different project from what it was before, if the, um, the two Cuthbert projects, for example, those were, um, changes in footprint, changes in square footage, changes in amenities. It's a whole new project. So those came to the planning commission. Richard, do you wanna add anything?
Um, uh, one, I heard Commissioner Mazza mention the word remodel. And I just wanna be clear that fire rebuilds and remodels are two very different processes. Um, obviously, you can't remodel a fire rebuild because there's no house there to remodel. Um, but the remodel policy is not tied to square footage. It's tied to exterior walls. Uh, whereas what Commissioner Marks brought up earlier this evening, um, that's for fire rebuilds and is specific to square footage.
So I'm still a little confused, and that is if your house burns down and you wanna make it fifty percent bigger, how do you get around getting a CDP?
If somebody-
Which apparently is what's happening.
Uh, as we mentioned, so far only about, I think, maybe 11 homes have, uh, been approved that way. If somebody wishes to do that, they first have to obtain approval to put the house back. And then if it qualifies, they can file for an addition to that home. And that addition needs to meet, just like it would outside of any fire constraints, all the requirements of the local coastal program. Because there are exemptions in our city's local coastal program that allow for additions to homes without triggering review by the planning commission or the coastal program.
And that's fifty percent is the line?
No.
Well, if they add a hundred percent, do they come to us or not?
Outside-
If somebody doubled the size of their house, yeah, they would, that would be a new project.
But fifty percent wouldn't be. That's why I'm trying to get an idea.
It's, it's a bit of a judgment call. If they're within the same basic pad and they're not, um, you know, changing the entire project, then conceivably it could be administrative done the same way an addition would be done.
And it never gets, and we never get noticed. We got approved.
No, typically those would get noticed because they typically, as you mentioned, do involve a second story or some adjustment to the um, setbacks or anything like that. That does require notice.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, a couple of things. Uh, first of all, the, i- i- in terms of advanced planning, Steve, the, i- i- it is our rule, and it always has been our rule, that projects are judged based upon the ordinances that exist as of the time the application is deemed complete. So, uh, the suggestion is that maybe the city council would have an opportunity to look at these projects and change the rules, uh, once they're coming forward to them. But you can't do that. You can't change the rules after the projects are deemed complete. Secondly, Bonnie, I'd like you to comment on, uh, the ordinance that the city, just to give it a little publicity, the, the ordinance that the city passed as an urgency ordinance the other day, um, about allowing restaurants to expand uh, into a surrounding area so long as they keep the, in order to accommodate, uh, social distancing, as long as they don't, uh, in- increase the, the number of patrons and so on. Um, that's it. Just a second. Bonnie, do you-
Sure, yeah. Um, so on, at last Monday's, uh, city council meeting, the city council adopted an urgency ordinance that allows, um, a very fast, um, free, no-charge process, um, for restaurants to get approval to expand their seating areas outside of what would normally be approved, whether that's based on their um, just existing operations or if they have a CUP already. Um, this is so that restaurants can spread out and accommodate the number of patrons they would normally accommodate, um, without having to otherwise, you know, it's very difficult for a restaurant to meet the six feet apart, social distancing and, and other requirements. So um, there is a, uh, on our, on the city's COVID webpage, there is information about the temporary restaurant recovery program. Justine Kendall is the planner who is the point of contact for that. Um, so if anyone has questions or wants to apply, um, Justine is the best person to reach out to. Um, if you have any other questions about that, um, I'm happy to answer. Uh, just to be clear, uh, it, it is not designed to allow anybody to add seats that they don't already have approval for. For example, if there's a limit on the number of seats based on a septic system or something like that, we will be doing research to make sure that, um, there's not an expansion or of, of use or an increase in impacts or anything like that. It's just designed to allow restaurants to recover the best they can, um, within these parameters.
Um, Chris, I saw your hand first.
Yeah, just a quick one. And so if I remember it, our parking calcs were based on, uh, number per, uh, it's a kind of service area. That account, calc is obviously adjusted because of this then?
This, this is a short-term, um, program. We're not getting deep into parking. Um, people are not gonna be using parking typically if they've got, um, you know, common areas and sidewalks and things like that that they can use. I, I don't expect that anybody's gonna wanna expand into a parking lot if they have alternatives to that. So I don't expect parking will be a big issue.
Okay, thank you.
John?
Uh, if a restaurant has a CUP that says you get a hundred and forty-seven seats or something, is that what you're going on? Or are you going on what they actually have, which in a lot of cases is not exactly close?
Whichever is more restrictive is what, I mean, whatever they're approved for, yes.
Thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, just a quick comment on your ostrich approach to looking forward. Uh, look, I, I'm not asking the city council to change the rules. All I'm saying is we are trying to rebuild our city. And I think it's important for the people who are in charge, the city council, who are looking at, at what's going on and how it's gonna and how it's gonna be impacted, to understand what the, the potential perspective is. So a forward look seems to me to be a process that is, that makes everybody smarter and helps everybody make better decisions.
Sure, I think that's harmless.
Right.
But, but you can't change the rules after the-
I'd say change, you can't stick your head in the sand and not see what's going on.
You wanna keep up pulling on that thread?
Yeah, if I have to.
Let's go, uh, with, uh, planning commission staff comments and staff, uh, comments. Bonnie?
Um, so we talked about the temporary restaurant recovery program. Um, I wanna make sure everybody knows that, um, per the usual, um, operations of the planning commission, the first meeting in July is canceled. July 6th, there will not be a planning commission meeting, so our next meeting will be July 20th. Um, we are, as somebody mentioned earlier, um, working on setting a date for the special meeting that the city council asked the planning commission to hold, um, in order to take up the short-term rental ordinance. Um, we'll be announcing that, um, uh, probably tomorrow. Uh, just wanna get all, make sure we've got everybody covered, um, for a date that works. Um, of course, per usual, we will be releasing the draft ordinance, um, well in advance of that meeting. Um, and let's see. A couple other notes about, um, oh, and that, that meeting will be held virtually, just like, um, these meetings have been here. Uh, a couple of notes about recent, other recent city council actions. Um, at their last meeting, the city council voted to approve an extension of the fee waiver program for fire rebuilds, basically to add six months to the, um, planning deadline and to the, um, uh, building permitting deadline. So those will move out six months. They will be formally adopting the resolution to memorialize that decision at their next meeting, um, a week from tonight. Um, let's see, at that meeting also on the 22nd will be the final budget hearing. Um, and let's see, I think that is, that is all I have on my list.
Okay, we don't have on this agenda, we don't have a report from, um, from Richard on the status of the, uh, rebuilds. Is that, uh, was that intentional or did you just-
Yeah, it was intentional. We had, um, canceled that going forward just because it felt like we were telling you the same things each week.
Right, right, right. You were, you mentioned that last time. Okay, John, what's, what's on your mind?
Um, Bonnie, when you say you're gonna release the short-term rental, uh, staff report early, are we talking just the week we normally get or can we get it earlier than that? Because it's gonna be complicated.
Well, everybody keeps saying how simple it's gonna be because it's gonna be just like, uh-
Well, we can do a much better job. I'll put it that way.
Yeah, my intention is to release it earlier than that. Um, so we're gonna do, it will come out at least as far in advance as normal and possibly more.
Okay, so that concludes, uh, item two. We're now at item three, the consent calendar. Kathleen, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, um, so these, we have several consent items now. Is there any that want, that anybody on the commission who wants to pull any of the items that are on the consent calendar? John? Jeff?
I'll pull 3B1. I can't say anything else.
I'll vote 3B4.
Yeah, I was just looking for 3B1 and 3B4 also.
Maybe 3B1. 3B4.
And I believe 3A3 was continued.
That's right.
All right, so can I get a motion for three, let's see, 3A? Alright, so can I get a motion for three, let's see, three A. One and two. Yeah, three A one and two and three B two and. Three B two and three.
The only speaker I'm showing, um, for three A one is Marnie Randall. I didn't, it doesn't specify if she wanted it pulled for any type of discussion. It, maybe it was just for questions.
Is she on?
She is on.
Uh, whi- which item is this again, Kathleen, I'm sorry?
Three A one?
Two.
Three A one. Uh, yeah, this is the, uh, the Sweetwater Mesa Road, uh, item, this is, um.
Right.
Right, and, and, uh, the, the only issue before us here is whether the resolution that the staff brought back. Accurately reflects the action that the commission took, uh, at the time of the hearing. Um, and we don't ordinarily have a full public hearing on these items, Trevor, what's the?
Uh, Marty, did you want to pull this one? If so, we should pull it separate and just move the balance of the calendar.
Marty?
There is one change that, um, staff wanted to make to the resolution, and that was just, uh, for three.
Let's, let's pull this one and we'll call the separate, he's got a motion on the balance then, not including three A one.
Uh, Trevor, question?
Yeah.
Since I'm recused on three B four, can I vote on this motion?
You can vote, vote on the, on this, but you have to specify that you are, uh, that you're recusing yourself and you're not voting on that one item. You can vote on the consent calendar. As a whole, but just note that you're not, since we're not calling a hearing on that, you don't need to actually leave the room and recuse, just state that you're recusing and the reason for it.
Okay, so the, the motion now is three A two. And three B two.
And three B three, I'll move that.
Three B three and three B three, yes, alright, um, it's a second.
I'll second.
Call the roll please, Kathleen.
And John, you need to recuse yourself from one of these?
Well, it wasn't, it was pulled.
It's three V four, okay, then one is, you can vote on the, the balance of the consent here, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
So do I vote?
Call the roll please, Kathleen.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so that takes us to, let's do three A one.
So, um, basically the only change that staff, uh, that we wanted to make to this resolution was to. Update the, the denial action to be without prejudice. If the commission is amenable to that.
That, that's usually the default for the, for the, the commission's action, but if, uh, I, I think staff wanted to be. Clear about which way, if, if it was meant to be one way or the other.
And you've modified the resolution? I'm sorry, Bonnie, I couldn't hear you.
You would need to make that change, that modification to the resolution, just to.
Okay, so, uh, do we, we, do we have a full hearing on this or what, Trevor?
Did you get, uh, I, I think Marnie is on, she would get three minutes to, if she wants to comment about. Whether accurately memorializes the action of the council.
Chris, what's, what's your hand up for?
Uh, just, uh, Bonnie, can you clarify exactly where that changes? Is that, that just in the header of page one of the resolution?
Um, I believe, Trevor, correct me if I'm wrong, it would be section three, um. Administrative plan review findings for denial, planning commission denying the application without prejudice.
Where, where is it? Someplace will.
Page two, page two of four, section three of the resolution?
Right.
Yeah, that, that kind of headline, underlined, uh, wording would go, uh, and add at the end without, uh.
Would be the, the. On the evidence and the record.
Oh.
Planning commission, the, the planning commission hereby makes the following findings denied, application without prejudice.
What does that mean?
It means that it can be brought again, with, with prejudice means that you're dead in the water and you can't start over again, when you, when the time allows.
It prohibits you for about a year from, from, uh, replant for substantially similar project.
So we think the building on one-to-one slopes should be something we should bring back?
No, you're not bringing it back, you're just allowing them to, to file a new application that has similarities to what's been applied for here.
And, and, and like I said, we think one-to-one slopes, building on one-to-one slopes which is denied, is something we should recommend they can get bring back. I'm just asking the question.
The, the question is just whether the intention of the, of the, of the commission was to deny with prejudice, or if it was without prejudice, so it could be brought back.
The applicant, the applicant may choose to modify the location of the garage or something like that. It just makes it clear that they could bring a new application.
I, I have a problem with that, go ahead.
Um, okay, Marty, are you on?
Also, also chair, there's a, a second speaker, Philip Gillen, I'm not certain he's here, but Marnie and Philip both are signed to speak.
Okay, I don't see Philip's name there, but, uh, you've got three minutes, Marty. Go ahead.
Well, it was my understanding that, uh, this denial would be without prejudice. And that I had the right to bring the project back. With modifications or through an appeal process. To be sent back to the commission. With adjustments that could be at least considered. It doesn't mean they would be approved. Only that they would be considered.
But that's sure, well, first of all, either way you would have the right to appeal, but, but, but. I think that's what we've just been talking about, Trevor, you have your hand up?
Yeah, uh, Chair Jennings, could I also ask that we, uh, take disclosures, if, if anyone has any ex parte communications about this?
Alright, we'll go through that. David, have you got any disclosures on this item?
Uh, yes. Yes, I had a, a phone conversation with Marty, uh, discussing the, the denial, um. Nothing else.
Alright, Rich, uh, Steve?
Uh, only that I walk up. Sweetwater Mesa and find that they're widening the road up there, which was part of the argument for doing this thing, but other than that, nothing.
John?
Uh, nothing since we passed it or denied it.
Chris?
I have no, uh, no updates since the last meeting.
Okay, I've got nothing. Um, alright, so you, like I said, Marnie, you've got three minutes. Marty, you're, you're muted.
And I keep getting muted, sorry.
There you go.
Uh, I really don't feel that I should have to argue the right to bring it back. Within less than a year. With adjustments to the project. I, I think particularly in this format of Zoom hearings and not being able to have commissioners come to sites and meet them. Without sending them down onto a site with story poles and stakes and wires everywhere on their own. Really is an unfair. Situation for an applicant. Particularly on a, an application that is. You know, as complicated as something like this. So I don't think what I'm asking for to be. For this to be approved without, I mean, your denial to be approved without prejudice. Means that you're going to be required to approve something that we bring before you later. It has nothing to do with that. It's just a matter of allowing us to bring something back.
Okay, thank you, Marty. Um, is Phil Gillen checking in somewhere? Kathleen, got anything from him?
I don't see him listed on the participants list at the moment.
Okay, um, is there anybody else that has indicated a desire to speak on this issue?
Not that I have, uh, listed, no.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and then we'll come back to the commission table. John, you had your hand up?
Yeah, we're voting on what Barney wants, correct?
That's.
That's what staff's recommending.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Chris?
That was it, just, just, just clarifying really to Marnie that we are doing what you're asking. You would have the right to come back, uh, with, with changes.
And, uh, Trevor?
Yeah, just to clarify that if you adopt staff's recommended action, then section thirteen point two-three would not bar the application. Thirteen point two-three prohibits them from filing a new application unless it's substantially modified. Um, for the next year, so that would, by, by doing it with, without prejudice, then it would. Um, excuse them from the restriction in thirteen point two-three.
This is actually to clarify, sorry, Trevor, this is, um, this is an administrative plan review, but there's an equivalent section in the municipal code, so that. Thank you.
I apologize.
Just wanted to be clear.
Thank you.
Steve?
I, I've got no problem.
Alright, so I need a motion, uh, Chris?
Sorry, just one more clarification, kind of a hypothetical. Um, if they had said it's gonna be painted red and it was gonna be painted blue, would that be kind of all they'd need to try to apply? Uh, you know, is there, what, there's no guidelines as far as an application within the year?
Uh, everybody, you know, they, they went through a long hearing, they heard everything that we had to say. Uh, I don't think anybody in the right mind is going to spend the time and money and effort that it would take to come back. And, and come up in our face and say, here's the same project, but we're painted blue, I mean.
Understood, I'm, I'm just, just for any clarification, kind of guidance from, I guess, Trevor on that, just in terms of how to kind of think about this, yeah.
Yeah, it, you know, the, the purpose of these provisions is to prevent someone from just bringing the same thing back over and over again. Uh, we generally don't have that problem, so usually, um, the, the commissioner, the council takes action that does it without prejudice. To let someone bring something back and then it removes the question of whether it's substantially similar.
Okay.
Whereas it's a judgment call for staff about whether it's substantially similar or you can get all the way to hearing. And the commission side, actually, it's substantially similar, you, it's not substantially, it is substantially similar, you, you gotta wait, so.
Got it, I'm good, I just wanted to make sure I, I was thinking about this right, thank you.
John?
I move the staff's recommendation.
Is there a second?
I second.
That, that means that it's without prejudice, including that, correct, including that?
Correct.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion? I've caught, Kathleen, roll please.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, so that's three B two, we're now at, I'm sorry, three A two. Three A one, like I said, um, now we're at three B one. Three B one is a de minimis waiver twenty dash oh oh five for twenty-two-nine-nine-two-one Harvester Road. John, do you have just questions about this, or you need a full staff report, or what's the deal?
Uh, I have questions, maybe it turned into more than that, but when I looked through the staff report, it said. You know, it's for, uh. Septic system. And. There's no real analysis except. On the first page of the compliance. Review, it's got a plan for seventy, for a seven-bedroom house. And then no calculations for. What we're approving, um, now if we have plans. Shouldn't we know what we're approving for? How many fixtures, et cetera, et cetera? Uh, you know, that's a basic question, uh.
Alright, let's, let's do this, let's, uh, let's, let's go the whole route, let's have a public hearing and get the staff report. So Jessica, can you give us the staff report?
Absolutely. Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. The item you have before you this evening is for a de minimis waiver for the property located at two-nine-nine-two-one Harvester Road. Um, for the replacement of a damaged septic system destroyed in the Woolsey fire. I'd like to provide you a brief project history. This project started as a code enforcement action for an unpermitted addition. Um, in the request to permit the after-effect additions in October of twenty fifteen. On March second, twenty seventeen, the city's environmental health reviewer determined that the existing OWTS could accommodate the proposed addition. However, during the fire, the home burned, and as a result, the application was processed and converted as a Woolsey fire. Application, um, and the review had been completed. The APR WF permitted the after-effect work for a total addition of three thousand two hundred and thirty-five square feet. For a total development square footage on the property of seven thousand one hundred and seventy-seven square feet. As stated in the DMW approval, the existing system was damaged and required a replacement. Based on the project history, had the old system remained intact, no replacement would have been necessary. Thank you, and then staff is available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, we got the public speakers on this, Kathleen?
We do not.
Okay, is there anybody that has signed up that, uh, that's, I guess I'm asking the same question slightly different way. Uh, if, if there are no public speakers, nobody wishes to weigh on this, we'll go back to the pub, they will close the public hearing, we'll open the public hearing. Then we'll close the public hearing, now we're back at the commission for comments, questions.
Do we have any disclosures? I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, let's do disclosures, yes. David, you got any disclosures?
No, I don't.
Okay, I don't either, Steve?
Nope.
John?
No.
Chris?
I caught up with, uh, Richard Malika, uh, he helped clarify what's on page two of the geo review sheet. Um, and it aligns with what Jessica just shared, so, um, nothing beyond, uh, what's in the public.
Okay, um, Steve?
This, somebody take me through, I think my, okay, somebody take me through, this was initially about a twenty-seven-hundred square foot house. And now it's a seven-thousand square foot house. How did it get from there to there?
The, um, for the administrative plan review, the original size of the house was three thousand nine, three thousand ninety-two square feet. Um, I think that two thousand eight hundred number is coming from a county number, not including overhangs and garages. Um, following, because it had been, um, previously in the system, prior processing as an APR, prior to the fire with these illegal additions. Um, we've continued to permit it and transitioned the application to a Woolsey fire application, since it was already under an administrative plan review.
So basically, the, the additions that they put on. Got approved, even though they weren't reviewed by anybody on, I mean, so they basically doubled the size of the house. Without ever coming to the planning commission, is that what happened?
Uh, the additions were exempt from a CDP, that for a regular, um. A pro- just outside of the realm of a fire rebuild altogether. There are a fair number of exemptions that apply to additions, uh, when they're not in the appealable zone. So, yes, that's, that's what happened.
But I'm just trying to understand, so it basically, what it sounds like is that if I build a house and I put illegal additions on it. I can get those illegal additions approved of ever coming to the planning commission, is that, is that what happened in this case?
That, it act, it is actually possible to, I mean, if you take the illegal part out of it, you have the illegal part in. It, the, um, the LCP allows for, um, additions. That are outside of the appeal zone, if, if, um. If it doesn't, if the, if the project scope does not contradict one of the exemptions allowed in the LCP. Then you can expand the size of your house, yes, without coming to the planning commission on, on this scale.
That's a pretty good deal, so if I, so I mean, if I want to build, so the, the game is build a house and legal additions.
It doesn't have anything to do with whether it was done with or without a permit, that, that exemption exists. For a huge part of the city that's outside of the appeal zone. In this particular case, someone happened to have. Built without permits, we code enforcement stopped them, they've been going, they had been going through the, um, permitting process for quite some time. Before, um, the Woolsey fire happened, so. To characterize it as doing something illegally gets you something that you wouldn't have been able to get otherwise is inaccurate. I just wanted to make that clear, that LCP provides exemptions if you're outside the appeal zone.
I think I understand all of that, but, okay, I mean, it just, again, it seems to me the process says. Build a house, put some illegal additions on there, you can get them approved, and it never has to go to anybody.
Let me suggest this to you, Steve, build a house, then apply and put legal additions on it, and you still don't have to come before the planning commission. Because there are exempt, they are exempt under the provisions of the LCP. There are exemptions, specific exemptions. Guest houses unfortunately are not one of them, but there are barns and swimming pools and things like that, which are just fine examples.
So, in this case, if they built barns and swimming pools, what did they build?
Their addition, they made addition, they proposed additions to their existing house. They're outside of the appeal zone, and so they're, they're allowed, you, uh, an existing house outside the appeal zone could. Add an addition that goes up to the maximum TDSF, that's what the, the current code.
Uh, just, it's, it's an amazing process.
Question?
I didn't make it up, it's.
No, I'm not saying made it up, but it just, it seems, you know, that I, again, doing something illegal, having it approved, and then having it. It just seems to me there's something wrong with that whole process, but what do I know, John, it's up to you.
Well.
Thanks.
My question would be, when I look at the, the plans, this looks like. Big mansion. big mansion, okay, with, you know, all kinds of stuff. Does anybody ever look at this as a remodel? If, if in the middle of this house, the footprint expanded on all sides, don't the remodel rules apply? Don't you have to leave fifty percent of your walls?
It burned down, John.
Exterior, it doesn't matter. That's what they're basing it on. On exterior, remain exterior?
This project.
Because this is not a rebuild for a fire.
Okay, it's not a fire. Richard?
This project did comply with the remodel policy. If you go back and look at the applications, we have them on file, and this was going to be approved as an addition to the home. What happened, though, as we've mentioned, is that in the process of us wrapping up a review, the home burned, and that caused us to change how we looked at this, because there, you know, the house was gone. There was no house there to put, to add on to.
Okay, but before you were talking about substantially the same building pad, and this thing has got to be twice. Well, at what point do you say the building pad got giant?
On this particular project, as we mentioned, there was extensive research done with the code enforcement. It was around, Jessica could correct me on the number, but somewhere in the high three thousand square feet. And as Bonnie mentioned, the, we looked at it to see if it meets any of the exemptions, and it did. It met the exemptions for a addition to an existing single family home. Less than fifty percent of those walls were affected. The wastewater treatment system in 2017 that was there was demonstrated to show capacity for the addition that the homeowner was proposing. This is just a very unique circumstance in the sense that you had somebody who was going through the process with an approvable project. And what staff's intentions here are basically to allow this process to finish and not all of a sudden have to switch gears or throw requirements in somebody's way, just because they unfortunately were hit by a disaster.
Last question. Are we, are we authorizing the same sized septic system that was determined to be adequate before? Or are we, we making it, it seems like it's a big one?
I would need to take a look at the previously approved system, but I believe it's the same.
It's the equivalent of the previous. It would be the code equivalent, I should say, because the system that was in there, along with a lot of these homes, that was a code compliant tank for the time that it was installed, but under today's rules, and this goes for many properties in the city, the tanks they have are too small, given the current code. And if they were to do any work to their system, would have to put a bigger tank in just to meet today's code. And that's what's happening here.
But if it hadn't burned down, you could have used the old one.
Chris?
Yeah. So and John, just to, if you look at the conformance review sheet, kind of towards the back end of this packet, probably around page twenty of the overall packet, it specifically says in the notes is for a fiery build of a seven bedroom, seventy fixture unit. It matches the rebuild quantities in terms of what's stated on conformance review. But I just wanted to kind of put the conversation in another way to make sure I'm following it correctly. Assuming the, the Woolsey fire had not happened, this applicant had already been called out by code enforcement, who had observed they had been doing illegal improvements. They appealed to the city, or shouldn't say appeal, they applied to the city to say, okay, we're recognizing that what we're doing, we need to pull permits for. They stopped the development. They were in the process of finalizing all the paperwork to make what they had permitted when the fire hit. So you're just basically kind of almost resetting the clock for them. We'll let you rebuild to what you were like before the fire hit. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, and then now to kind of dig in on what really Steve and John, really more Steve, I think, is calling out Commissioner Uring, I should say. The hypothetical then is that, again, if the fire hadn't happened, this applicant could have chosen to pull permits before ever lifting a screwdriver to do any changes. And they would have by rights, since they're outside of the, the appeal zone, if I remember right, then they would have been able to pull permits and do this work. They got it backwards. They did the work, were asked to stop, then went through the process, correct? Okay. And then, and then generally speaking, just as kind of a broad statement, the appeal zone, is that where it generally it's defined as anything on the inland side of the road nearest the ocean? Does that generally define the appealable versus non-appealable zone? Or are there other, like, are ridges also subject to the appeal zone, what have you?
It's a little more complicated than just the inland side of the road. The, there, there is an appealable zone map that includes just roughly speaking areas that are on the inland side of the first public road.
Oceanside.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. The, between the first public road and the sea, and then also within a hundred feet of any streams. And let's see, oh, three hundred, I think it's three hundred feet, actually, and three hundred feet bluff. So there's, it's a kind of a funny looking map, but it's part of the LCP maps, if you ever wanted to look at it. And it, so it does have an inland reach also.
And if you go to the GIS portal, for example, is that one of the overlays you can throw on that map like you can Esha? Okay, so the public could go to GIS, put in their address and see are they in the appeal zone or not?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so, yes.
Two quick ones. The, the when this, when these folks came to the city in terms of trying to get permits for the illegal additions that they did, did they have to pay the regular fees? Or as a result of this fire rebuild, were they granted relief from all those fees as part of the fire rebuild and part of our current process? So do they get kissed twice? Is my question.
It's my understanding that they had to pay the full fees, as well as code enforcement fees for the code violation.
They did that. You're happy with that? Okay. Last question is, if I go to the conformance page that Chris earlier mentioned, across the top of it, it says a seven bedroom, seven fixture, fire fixture unit. And then in the notes, it says this conformance review is for a fire rebuild for a five bedroom, seventy fixture unit. So what the hell, which one is it?
Sorry, my mistake. I, I had my mouse was over the five. I was more focused on that seventy fixture unit. Sorry.
But below it, the note says it's for a five. Which one is it? I'm trying to figure it out.
When is conformance against fixture units or bedrooms? Or do they both have to?
In the bottom, the notes that, this conformance review that we're looking at here
Right.
on your page says is for a fi, a fire rebuild of a five bedroom, seventy fixture unit, single family dwelling versus the seven bedroom that we, I'm, which one is it?
Let me look at the APR to count the number of bedrooms, if you just give me a moment.
It's okay.
Hey Jennings, I think we still need to take disclosures and open the public hearing, too.
We did, actually, opened it, closed it, because there was nobody that, that no public speakers were were present. And actually, you know, the only item before us is, is whether the de minimis waiver is, is going to be received and filed or not. All of the stuff we're talking about, about the project and all the rest of the stuff has nothing to do with the application in front of us. Yes.
That was actually going to be my question. Procedurally, do we as a commission generally, when asked to approve a de minimis waiver for a onsite wastewater treatment system, get into the bootstrapping of the entire project itself and go through things like how many bedrooms, square footage, and all of that? I, I mean, I, I'm new to this, so I don't know the answer, but it seems beyond the scope of what we're being asked to approve.
What's going on with it?
Well, I would just note that this is a little unique in the sense that it does state in the report the specifics of that proposed build. So I agree, Commissioner Wilde, generally in your observation, but I think this one is a little unique, as far as my experience.
And by the way, I, I do recognize the inconsistency that Steve pointed out. One says seven bedrooms, one said five, but I mean, to some extent, it's irrelevant.
Oh, it isn't irrelevant, because it, it, the size of the house and number of units and bedrooms, it defines the size of the septic system they have there.
I think that fixtures number is the same, right?
Yes.
From looking at the floor plans, it's five bedrooms. But this, I believe it's still seventy fixture units total.
So we're looking at a five bedroom house?
Correct.
So do we have to change the resolution?
You don't have a resolution.
We don't have a resolution.
We have a waiver.
This is a receivable file.
I know, and if it's incorrect, do we have to correct it?
It's not incorrect.
Okay.
Trevor, you got your hand up, I think.
Sure. I, I just wanted to clarify there that the question here is just about the OWTS system. You can see the findings that were made by the planning director. If you think there's an error or some reason that this system, the OWTS system needs to come back, then it's the commission's, has the ability to require a full CDP for the system. So.
So nowhere in this resolution do we define it as being a seven bedroom house. Is that right?
We're just interested in the system, not in the, in the house.
I'm just resolving the resolution says.
The resolution's not going to approve a house. All it does is approve the system. It, it's not a resolution. It's a planning director decision, right?
Right.
Well, there is a point that last week we were told that now we're calculating by number of bedrooms. So.
Okay.
Whatever.
I, I realize that our agenda has kind of fallen apart on us, but we really have to kind of move things along. The only way out of this is to get a motion by somebody to either disapprove the, the planning director's determination and to have it brought back as a full CDP. Or if there's no such motion, then this is just a receivable file and we move on. Is there?
Yeah, I, I moved that we're receivable file. Just, I just wanted clarity on this.
Okay, there is no motion to receivable file. We just received.
There we go.
David?
Second.
Well, okay, fine. Then is there anybody who wants to make a motion? A motion to bring it back? Okay. Hearing none. It's received and filed, and we're done with three B one. That takes us on to three B four. Three B four is an extension of coastal development permit eleven dash oh forty six. This is the project at sixty fifty Murphy Way.
Mr. Chairman, I am recusing myself. Somebody's got to turn me off.
Yeah, John, Commissioner Mazza, I just want to clarify that this is what you have to do if you're recusing yourself on this item. And you're identifying, you're not finding you're recusing yourself as the same reasons as the previous items, correct? That you recused yourself on this item previously?
I have no idea why I recuse myself, but I'll do it.
Okay. And then you need to turn off your mic, your camera, and any listening devices or aids, including any speakers, headphones, or captioning for the duration of this item. Someone will call you to come back online when this is over.
Okay, but I could leave it on. I don't want to take, go off of Zoom, or I'm dead, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's generally better we put them at the end for that reason, but it, it's okay. We can do it this way. But you need to turn everything off. You can't keep the, you can't keep the camera on.
He's now in the waiting room.
Close everything.
Now, I have a question, Trevor. When, when we have to recuse ourselves when we're at the, in the council chambers, we walk outside, we, we exit the, the council room, and we walk into the lobby where it's playing on TV. Is there some reason why John shouldn't be allowed to listen to this thing while it's going on?
This is, this is the guidance from the FPPC. They've made a specific finding about for teleconferencing, how you need to recuse yourself. So.
You don't want to mess with the FPPC. All right, so this is item three B four. You have a staff report, please. Who's got this one?
Certainly.
Me again.
The item you have before you tonight is for a one year extension for CDP number eleven zero four six for the property located at six zero five zero Murphy Way. Currently, the project is actively pursuing plan check and is in the process of pursuing, finishing that up with California code check. Keeping my presentation brief, staff is available for any questions, as well as the applicant team. Thank you.
Wow, okay. So let's go through and get disclosures for Exparted Communications. David?
Uh, yes, I had a phone conversation with a representative of the applicant that just discussed basically what's already here. So nothing new.
Steve?
Uh, yeah, I talked to Norman Haney, tried to get some perspective on what's taking place in this project since the time it was developed. He sent me a, a, some information, which I think has been subsequently distributed to everybody, which we'll talk about when we get to that point.
Chris?
I did have a conversation with Norm Haney as the representative of the applicant, and we just discussed some of the documentation forward to the public, really nothing beyond the scope of those docs.
I had none. All right, so let's open the public hearing. I take it, Mark, that Norm is around there someplace?
We have Norman Haney, C Dean Rasmussen, Eric Rasmussen, and Brian Biglin, who have signed up to speak today.
Okay. They're all part of the applicant team. And who was the last name? I'm sorry, after Norm and CJ and Eric and who?
Brian Biglin. And I think in the past, we have given three minutes. We don't really have an applicant team if it's not a full public hearing, but I think that's at your discretion.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Trevor, help me out on this. This is, this is ordinarily on a pulled item. We don't, Trevor, you're muted.
Yes, I'm sorry. I, for these, we only, I think it's only three minutes is what we normally do.
Three minutes each? Okay. All right, so who would like to lead off? Norm?
Just a quick clarification, that if this is ever made into a full one, then they would get the fifteen minutes for the full hearing here. Oh, wait, no, sorry, this is an extension. Never mind.
Okay.
Norm?
Yes, planning commissioners, Chair Jennings. I do represent the applicant on this particular project. I'll make a very short presentation. We were well on our way to pulling, pulling building permits on a project that's ten thousand five hundred and eighty six square feet in size. And we found out early in January that the Los Angeles County Fire Department wanted an update on the fire flow in the area. They had heard rumblings that the fire flow was not fifteen hundred square feet in the Murphy Way and Whining Way area.
Fifteen hundred gallons, Jenny?
I beg your pardon?
Fifteen hundred gallons a minute.
Fifteen hundred gallons a minute for a duration of two hours and pressure at twenty PSI. So they, so basically, they wanted an update. The, they went to the Los Angeles County Water Department and found out that the water department had actually done some remodeling and would only approve fourteen hundred gallons a minute. They asked for a fire flow test, and that was run on February twentieth and found out that in fact, there was less than fourteen hundred gallons per minute. And however, the, the water department said that they would approve fourteen hundred gallons per minute. The Los Angeles County Fire Department said, you have to reduce the size of your house. And so they immediately started working on the reduction of the size of the house. And a project that was approved originally, which was ten thousand eight hundred and eighty seven square feet, became a project that's nine thousand three hundred and forty seven square feet, a reduction of one thousand five hundred and forty square feet. The problem is that they had to redesign the entire project. Then they had to go get the civil engineer to redo the grading, the structural engineer to redo all the plans, and they had to go through all of the departments to get approvals before they could file construction drawings. And this became a huge problem when, when you had to add to it COVID nineteen and the difficulty in meeting with the different departments. Take the Public Works Department. You know, if you change something that was involved, say, ten cubic yards, you would file an application for that change with the Public Works Department. You'd go immediately to the back of the queue, and it would take a long time before you ever got to them.
Norm, I don't know if you can see the clock, but your time expired.
I, I just saw it. I, I think we meet the due, due cause requirements for the extension.
Okay, thank you. CJ Rasmussen? I got C. Dean Rasmussen, okay, all right. You're good to go, Mr. Rasmussen. Can you unmute yourself? Can somebody unmute him?
I don't see him.
I see a Carrie Rasmussen, perhaps?
We've had an Eric on the list, let's just change the order and see if we can we got a speaker we can bring up and then we can come back and pick up the others.
I've unmuted C. Dean.
Okay, thank you.
I think if there are questions, I will speak to questions.
Wait, just a second, hold on, hold on.
There's Dean.
Who's trying to speak here, okay, are you Mr. Dean Rasmussen?
Can you hear me, I'm Eric Rasmussen under Carrie's name.
Okay, all right, Eric, you're on, three minutes.
I apologize, I've just joined and I don't have, I will defer to Norm Haney until I've gotten up to speed on where we are in this meeting.
All right, let me explain it to you because Norm has already talked for his three minutes and basically he's given the explanation about the change in the fire flow requirements and the need to redesign the house to make it smaller and the process of going through getting getting through plan check and then getting through all the departments in order to approve the drawings. You might bring us up to date if you can on where we are now in the process of of the getting the project underway. You know, speak whatever you want to speak about, but that's something that hasn't been touched on.
My understanding is that we are going as quickly as we can, there were, I guess Norm has already alluded to the changes in the revisions to the house plans that have caused some delay. But I do believe that we'll be able to get a building permit and get going within, you know, if we're granted a year, I'm very confident we'll be able to do it. I can't speak with too much detail, but I can I can address any questions if there are, I can try.
Or was there anything else you wanted to discuss? You've got?
No, not necessarily.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then who else do we have, Kathleen, can you identify anybody else?
I show Eric Rasmussen and Brian, oh, that was Eric. Okay, it was C. Dean Rasmussen.
Carol Dean IP, Carol Dean's IP, is that?
He's right here.
I'm right here.
Okay, who've we got?
I'd like to give my time to Brian Biglin if I can.
Well, you can't, we don't we don't allow those transfers while we're in this this.
Nonetheless, I thank you guys for your time.
Okay, and then Brian, are you available?
Yes, yes, I'm here, thank you. I wanted to let the planning commissioners know that we've worked extremely hard to get our project to a certain level for submittal and to go through the process and the fire flow reduction put in a huge dent in our timeframe, requiring us to redesign the building and go through project consultants to to look at this. Our first approach was to work on the design and then immediately go to the fire department to work out a solution so that we can get the building to a size that they would approve based on the 1,400 GPM. The COVID-19 pandemic has been a real issue and it's not that anybody at the city is not working hard, we work really well with everybody, it's just the process is so different. You know, having to send large files and having to work virtually via email is really put a time impact on how we're getting approvals and information. I suspect in a few months, maybe, you know, four or five months, that there'll be some streamlined process with with everybody. But the protocols right now on how we work, it's very time consuming. We are very close, we've submitted to most of all, we've actually submitted all our departments have gone through corrections and we're working, we will be working on some adjustments in planning for the reduced size of the house, but we've we've tried to tackle some of the bigger departments first to make sure that they're in acceptance of what we're proposing. I ask that you would approve this extension as we're close. I think we can get this to a finish line and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Have we heard from everybody who signed up, Kathleen?
Yes, we have, Chair.
Nobody else is there, all right.
No.
We'll close the public hearing, we're back at the commission table. Who would like to start? David?
I have a, I guess, procedural question similar to the one I asked on the last project we just discussed. Is the subject matter that we are supposed to be considering whether or not there is due cause for the extension and not issues like what fire flow, water flow, size of the project and all of those things that would ordinarily be considered in a site plan review?
Trevor, you can answer if you will.
That's absolutely correct, so I think they were providing the background there about that to explain why there's due cause, that there is extra work required here. But that's what it comes down to is analysis of whether there's due cause for the extension or not. So that's that's exactly the consideration you have before you.
Let me just add to that because if we did not limit the issue to whether there's due cause, then every extension request would become a rehearing of every project. And people who oppose the projects would come forward and we would never be able to we'd never be able to be able to handle the time pressures.
That's why I that's why I asked.
Yeah, Steve, you had your hand up.
You're on mute, Steve.
Yourself in a second, here's my question. Our resolution says we're approving a 10,605 square foot house, which is not the size of the house that was originally approved in the initial resolution, okay? So I and that's we're not approving that because the current house that they're building cannot be 10,605 square feet or 10,800,000 square feet as was originally approved. If you look at that chart, my problem is I don't know what the hell I'm approving, okay?
You're approving an extension.
Let me finish my comment, you can jump in when I'm done.
I thought there was a question mark there, go ahead.
No, there's I do not understand what I'm approving, there's a this report resolution says I'm approving a 10,000 square foot house, I'm not doing that. If you look at what Norm has provided us, he's saying right now they're building a 9,000 square foot house. As a result of the fire flow thing, well, we go back, they originally approved the 10,000 square foot house. Then they went back and redesigned it back in 2019 and they increased the size of the basement to some 4,500 or 4,000 square feet. And then when the fire flow came back, they reduced the basement to something like by 700 square feet. When the fire flow information from the fire department said it should be 1100 square feet, I don't know what I'm approving and I don't have a problem approving it, I just want a resolution that says here's what we're doing and it's right. Okay, so my my thing says, I don't, if someone comes to me tomorrow morning and says what you approved, I have no idea. So my my position says, go back, give me a resolution that defines what the hell it is we're approving and I'm more than happy to play.
Okay, Chris, you've got your hand up or you're scratching your head, one of the?
It was a hand up, yeah, so I guess what I understood in talking this through a bit more with Norm and I'm kind of seeing where Commissioner Euring is winging. My understanding is the structure size is lower than what they're approved for, so because of the fire flows, they had to reduce size. That project, you know, the kind of wiggling that through and getting sorted out is what is part of what's leading to delays, but it's a smaller structure overall than what's approved. Then the second aspect, and maybe Norm could talk to this a bit more. Now, looking at the table Steve's talking about, I do see TDSF called out, I thought the calc's that you had shared with me, Norm, were more about how the fire department looked at the sizes and that might help clarify some of what Commissioner Euring's thoughts are. Commissioner or Chair Jennings, if you'll allow that input in a minute, I'd appreciate it. Otherwise, the way I'm looking at this, you know, the guidance that Commissioner Wild gave, hey, it looks like extenuating circumstances allows this extension, that's what we're focused on and it looks to be a smaller project, so in that sense, I feel I'm good, but I just want to clarify.
Bonnie, you want to weigh in, go ahead.
I was just going to try to explain it in this way, the entitlement that the applicant or the property owner currently holds is a coastal development permit for a 10,000 some odd square foot house with some variances and things like that. And that entitlement has conditions of approval, so they can't build beyond what the entitlement was for as conditioned by the conditions of approval. In the process of going through the plan check process, they have run into further constraints that have knocked down what the maximum is, which is the 10,000 some odd square feet they can build, so what's before you is an extension of this entitlement, which still comes with all the same conditions of approval, so they still have the have to get the fire department approval, so that's part of the conditions of approval, so by extending this by one year, that's all you're extending is this entitlement as conditioned to comply with all the fire department and everybody else's requirements, so you don't have to go back and, you know, kind of micromanage and tweak the exact language of the the original resolution or that's just the title of this one because it's it's just limited, it's already limited by all those conditions of approval. All of those are still in place.
David?
Yeah, I thank you, I share Commissioner Euring's point that it's hard to pin down the exact number, but it's less than what was what could have been granted and then I guess what gave me comfort is on page eight of 21 on the conditions of approval, number 10, minor changes to the approved plans or the conditions of approval may be approved by the planning director provided such changes achieve substantially the same results and the project is still in compliance with the MMC and the LCP. Revised plans reflecting the minor changes and additional fees shall be required. So I take that to mean it's got to be what was approved, subject to minor variations, and we already know it's going to be less square footage than it could have been before.
Yeah, I more, I my reaction is this is exactly what Bonnie was saying. That there is an entitlement that's been granted and what we are doing is approving an extension of the time limit only on that entitlement. We know because what Norm's told us and the other applicants have told us that the house isn't going to be that big, it's going to be a smaller house because of fire flow requirements and so on and rest. But that's not before us, we're not issuing, we're not, it's we don't have to decide whether the new house is the right size or the wrong size or anything else, it's just a question of has the applicant demonstrated good cause for an additional delay, that's the only issue that's before us and I don't see it as very complicated. Chris?
Yeah, I'd like to put a motion out there for consideration. I'm comfortable granting an extension, what I'm a little uncomfortable with is that if we go that full year right up against a five-year, the five-year limit with the property changing hands, I'd be more comfortable kind of putting a breaker in between there, you know, maybe giving a six-month and then that keeps just kind of keeps things a little closer, so if there are any problems, they can kind of report that out without all of a sudden staring down the final deadline, I do not want to get in a game of trying to go past five years, so I'd want to do something where we basically can more really partner with the applicant to to help make sure they're really checking the boxes to get this thing through, so that's that's my really my only kind of thought on this one, especially since a new owner's coming on, a new architect, et cetera.
I mean, what so what, how much additional extension would you give him, Chris?
I mean, I was thinking the six months and then, you know.
From today or where would six months from the required date bring them to, Bonnie?
Jessica, do you know that offhand or?
The expiration's in July, so six months from July 18th.
Okay.
January 18th.
Jan 18th, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So how does this help exactly, Chris?
Well, so the property is changing hands, we've got a new owner and a new architect, everything in there. If there are things that come up and we're getting up to the tail end of this, I'd rather that this body knows that earlier rather than later. Because if we come up to that five year, you know, granting in past the five-year period, I'm just not comfortable with, so it's it's really just kind of almost like a checkpoint, like a built-in checkpoint is the way I'm looking at it.
Jeff, let me just reinforce, look, they could have had this house built. Right, if they had followed through when they got the permit and done what they were supposed to be, this house would be probably done right now. So I think, you know, our job is to make sure people are moving forward with the building process, I agree with Chris.
Was that a motion, Commissioner Marks?
I had made a motion for lining up with staff report with a six-month instead of 12-months extension. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
I just a point of clarification, I guess. I'm not 100% sure I understand what you're proposing, is it if six months pass and they're moving down the line, are you suggesting there's something like an automatic renewal for the second six months or they have to come back and go through this with us again?
They'd have to come back, it's more, it's a checkpoint, it would be a formality similar to this, you know, and hopefully at that point, it's just we're getting our final sound up from fire and it's like, okay, good, move it on, we're done, you know, that's my, that's the logic I have in mind.
I'm just, I'm unclear what it is about what's being proposed that that makes you feel the need to cut it in half as opposed to just give them the time they need and if they run up against the five years, they know what's coming and we're not likely to approve it.
Well, with the change with property changing hands, at this point, I just have more comfort that we'd be that this applicant would actually be better positioned, having that kind of artificial barrier at six months out to as a checkpoint, I'd be I'd be concerned more concerned if for whatever reason we slipped out to the 12 months, then things are really blowing up, you know what I mean, so that's just kind of where my my head is on this.
Okay, well, Bonnie, do you have anything you want to add?
I was just going to interject that it does. I understand what Commissioner Marks is getting at, it does add additional work for the planning commission and for staff to put all this together with the noticing requirements and everything where it always ends up being way in advance of when the actual hearing will be. I tend to feel that a year would be a more practical way to deal with it, I think they've heard the message loud and clear that they need to make sure they can get their project commenced in time and not need to request another extension. But just from staff standpoint, it would it would be more practical and accomplished when I feel like it's about the same thing.
And Bonnie, let me second what you just said, okay, because I sat through this racist meeting where you and Stephanie went to the city council and said, we got to stop issuing these extensions because it caused the problem you just mentioned, all right? So look, I think the six, if they're going to do it, let's get them off their butt and have them do it, they think they claim they've got all the stuff submitted to the staff, they're ready to go, let's make, let's keep the pressure on them to make sure they get it done.
All right, look. This is a project, politically fraught project, it's been going back and forth for a long time, David, and I think that, I must say, I have I do not understand at all the suggestion or what it does or helps or anything, but I understand that there's, you know, you're not giving the applicants what they've asked for, so there's a benefit to that. And I can also count to three, the two-to-two motion fails and so, yeah, let's let's go with it. I call it, yeah, we're done, you've got a motion in a second if there's further discussion, let's call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute, Chris had some question he wanted to ask Norm and Norm's got his hand up there, before we get going on that, let's get Norm back on here. Chris, you got a question for him?
Yeah, just Norm, there had been a question before about the description on the fire size versus TDSF, that that's what the question I had had earlier.
Yes. The the way in which the fire department determines the size of a building is very different than the way that the city establishes the total development square footage. And such as the city eliminates 1,000 feet of the basement and then splits the remainder of the basement in half. The fire department includes the entire basement, the entire, all the time, all the floors, including the stairs on both both floors as well as the overhangs, so this total development square footage that you see of 9,347 total development square footage that you see of 9,347 square feet, which again is 1,500 square feet, less than what was approved. That is based upon the city's analysis, not on the basis of the fire department. Fire department's already approved what we have submitted to them. And I would, I, I would ask for a nine-month extension instead of just six months. We don't know what the COVID, uh, 19, we don't know how that's going to slow us down. If you can find your way to split the baby and give us nine months, we would be very happy with that. We could make that work.
And I'd be open to a friendly amendment if that makes sense to anybody else. I mean, just, just logically, that's kind of the intent I was getting at to have some type of a, kind of a check.
Well, you can change your motion if you wish. David, you had your hand up.
I was gonna offer the friendly amendment to nine months.
There you go. All right. So, uh, you, you're willing to accept that as a friendly amendment, Chris?
Yes, I will.
Nine months. Steve, you were the seconder. Are you willing to accept that?
I still like six.
So you're not willing to accept the friendly amendment?
I'll let it go. Go ahead. I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm
All right. Let's call the, uh,
Go ahead and come back. I mean, they, this is
Let's call the roll.
clarify, this is for a nine-month extension.
That's correct.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Uring?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. So that takes, if somebody called John and getting back in here. We take a five-minute break while we're waiting for John to get squared away technologically. How would that be? Is that possible?
I, I say hi, hi from here.
Eight, ten, if everyone could mute and, uh, turn off their video while we're
Eight, ten, eight, ten it is.
Thank you.
Where's my mouse?
John's been notified?
I believe Bonnie was calling in. Bonnie, did you get ahold of John?
Um, Alex said he's there.
Can I, can you hear me?
Yep, you're back.
Yes.
Can hear you, can't see you.
How's that?
There you go.
I think Steve's dog ate him though. He's gone.
Yeah.
There he is.
Okay, um, anytime somebody wants to push the button. Okay, we're back in session. This is the Monday, June 15th, regular city planning, city of Malibu Planning Commission meeting. We're now at item four E. This is a coastal development permit amendment 20-16. This is to allow a temporary skate park project to proceed now with, uh, certain planting areas. And Jessica. Boy, you threw them off tonight.
Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. The item you have before you tonight is CDPA 20016 for the project located at 24250 Pacific Coast Highway to allow for an amendment to CDP number 19083 for the temporary skate park. Next slide, please. This slide demonstrates a vicinity map and aerial photograph of the project site and the surrounding area. The project site is located on lot number seven of the Crummer Case subdivision. Surrounding areas include recreational uses and future residential development. Love's Park is located to the south of this project site and the case project, which is under construction, is located to the east. Next slide, please. This amendment includes the placement of 244 linear feet of potted trees similar or approved by the city biologist that will not exceed eight feet in height along the northern and western portion of the property and the placement of up to three freestanding potted trees for not to exceed eight feet in height. Next slide, please. Pictured here is the site plan. The proposed potted trees will be placed along the northern property line and to the western property boundary. The red arrows indicate the placement of the 244 linear feet of potted trees. The green box highlights the proposed location of the three freestanding trees. Next slide, please. Here is an updated project rendering highlighting the location of the various project skate elements. As previously mentioned, the skate elements, including the top of rail, will not exceed seven feet, six inches in height. Next slide, please. Pictured here is the most updated site photograph. As you can see, the project is currently under construction. Next slide, please. In summary, the proposed project meets all city codes and standards and staff recommends adopting the resolution approving the CDPA. Staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, let's do disclosures of ex parte communications and start with, uh,
Me?
Yeah.
Uh, I had a conversation with Trevor this afternoon about the resolution and, uh, whether or not we could, uh, put certain things in it. They were mainly technical and, uh, had nothing to do with the actual project.
Okay.
Other than the resolution.
Nothing.
Chris?
Uh, had a last meeting. I did a site visit and then also had a conversation with Director Bobbit. So, uh, just to get a little more aware of, uh, product development.
David?
Nothing.
And nothing for me. All right. Is there, do we have public speakers?
We do not have anybody signed up to speak.
Okay, the staff wish to make a presentation?
Not beyond what Jessica just provided.
Okay, um, then we will open the public, John.
Go ahead. You can open public here.
Open the public hearing and if there's nobody prepared to speak, we will close the public hearing and we're back at the commission table. Steve, you have your hand up.
Quick question. I thought when this thing was revised, they changed the parking lot. Did that not happen? I mean, I could be wrong. I wasn't paying real close attention, but I thought that, I thought there was some portion of that taking place.
So when the, I'm gonna point to, to, uh, Director Bobbit. We need more detail than I can provide, but, um, when the council was considering the final design of the, uh, skate park elements, they, in order to try to address, um, some issues of the developer of the case project, they agreed to shift the, um, paved portion of the project that where the skate elements would be located, um, approximately 20 feet. Nothing changed in terms of the project, the project size and the, the types of elements and all the parking spaces and all of that are exactly the same. So that change was approved administratively. Um, and then the other thing the council asked staff to do was in work with, um, the developer to incorporate these potted trees and to provide some additional screening at the entrance of the skate park. So that's what is before you tonight is the, um, amendment to accommodate the placement of these trees.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to the park or anything that's going on. I just thought that the change in the parking would somehow be included in what we're looking at tonight. Apparently not.
No, I can, I can address that. Good evening, commissioners. Uh, the parking itself was not changed at all. What we did was we originally had a a very large drop-off pickup area and that's what you see just to the east of the actual skate park itself where the skate park equipment is. So, uh, we had plenty of room there to literally just condense that drop-off pickup area, shrink it down in size and then shift the skate park over. And so, uh,
Something has changed. I look, I, and I'm not, you can change whatever you, I mean, I got no problem. I'm just trying to figure out what should have been included in the resolution. Cause I just remember somebody saying they changed the parking space. That's all I know.
The, the parking has not changed. The actual parking for the area has not changed in any way, shape or form.
Okay, anybody else? John, I can
What?
You can just see your fingertips there.
Okay, well, this iPad is weird. Um, okay, well, first I want to, uh, I want to ask Bonnie, um, this was kind of a strange project because we approved it, we gave a CDP. That CDP went beyond the appeal period and then the city council did a deal with the developer and changed it. So you made a determination that it was a no big deal change. And my, my question is this is the first time I've seen any project have a, have the entire footprint be moved without it be considered a major change. So is there any chance that a commercial project or residential project could do the same and claim and claim that it was a minor change?
So I wanna, I wanna be clear because I can understand why you'd be concerned about the idea that the whole project shifted 20 feet and every, you know, that there was a, a big difference here. What changed is the paving surface, um, and, and the impermeable coverage area moved over. This is, you know, this is flat. It's not a structure. The the skate elements themselves are movable. Um, the design that was presented to you as a on a conceptual level was not a final design. It was, it was conceptual in nature to give you an idea of what was approved, what was going to be coming, um, what was approved for basically parameters. So, um, that's that's why the, to shift this paving area over, um, was not a substantial change in the project because the, it didn't, it didn't affect in any significant way where the skate equipment was going to be placed or what any of the parameters for the project, such as the square footage of the, um, skating surface, the heights or the setbacks of the, um, skating equipment or the number of parking spaces, none of the thing, the functional things that would have any impact on the way the project actually works or, um, its visual impact. So that's and those are all the things that are taken into consideration when I review something for a substantial conformance determination. Um, if there's any, um, like three-dimensional issues that would change then or an increase in size or an increase in impacts. That's when it, we refer it back to the commission and to, and let the applicant know that they need to do an amendment.
Okay. And as I understand it, the actual skate park itself decreased by about 10% as far as the equipment goes. That's a reduction. So we don't need to consider the fact that it got smaller.
I mean, that's, that's one of the other guiding factors in determining substantial conformance. Generally speaking, if things get smaller rather than bigger in footprint, then, um, that's true.
Okay, um, there's some smaller items that I want to go over that probably should be in the resolution and I'm gonna propose them. But the first one, I don't, I couldn't find it in there or not. We originally approved a permeable fence. Oh, by the way, I forgot to disclose that I talked to Richard this afternoon and asked him some of these questions. I did not really get an answer back. Um, the the, we approved a permeable fence and now you're proposing to add an impermeable barrier on the, uh, immediately adjacent to the fence. So do we need to change the resolution to have an impermeable fence?
Are you referring to the, um, the trees as the barrier?
Right.
Yeah, that's exactly why, um, this is an amendment before you because there was no um, solid barrier included in the original project. So that's, that's why this amendment is solid barrier included in the original project. So that's, that's why this amendment is before you. In the code, a solid hedge is treated the same as a fence or a wall. So that's
So we don't need to call it out. We just assume it's that way.
Yeah, a hedge is treated in the code section as the same as a fence or a wall.
Okay, and I understand that. Now, as part, and I also should disclose, I went to the city council hearing and part of the discussion at that hearing was that the developer as part of his deal was going to give money to the city, which I understand he did not and was going to provide the trees, maintain them and water them. Now, I understand that's not the way it is and that's not in this resolution.
The, the application that's before you was submitted by the city, so there would not be a way for us to include some third party as part of, you know, being subject to this resolution. So that, those arrangements will be made between Jesse's department and the developer, I assume, or else with Public Works or the city in some other level.
Okay, well, when I talked to Trevor today, he said the same thing, but he said we could put in the resolution that this isn't, these are optional additions to the project. And therefore you could say, well, no trees, we can't put them in, or no water, we can't water them, or et cetera, et cetera. So Jesse or whoever's going to decide all these things doesn't have to put in the trees, doesn't have to maintain them, doesn't have to take them out.
What?
Just a second, just a second, Trevor.
Yeah, John, you asked me to, to, you know, I have some proposed language. Would this make sense for what you're looking for to say that the, the potted trees are allowed but not required by the CDP?
Okay.
You're the, the sole yeah, just so it's clear that the sole purpose of the amendment is to add them.
And, and they're not required for screening purposes or anything like that so that they're not necessary, but they're allowed to be installed, then the
Okay.
Would that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I mean, you can correct, when I make the motion, you can correct that if you want. Now, another thing I saw is that on two A, seven and eight of the resolution, it says the trees are eight feet. But it doesn't say from where. So you theoretically could come in here with a four foot plot and have a twelve foot tree. So I'm, I'm gonna propose that we add from finished grade to those three different paragraphs. So we don't get into an argument about that. The reason I'm doing that is when the original CDP was approved or the original lot split and uh, deal with the developer was approved. Malibu Country Estates and the Memorial Park objected to view blockage along that corridor. So I just wanted to be clear. It's nothing more than to make it be clear. Now, the other question I have with Bonnie is is, is this a temporary CDP?
The, the entitlement runs with the land. The council's intention is that this skate park be in place until such time as there is a this is probably more in Jesse's realm than mine, but the, the so far the council direction is to replace this skate park with a new one in the same location. So this one would not coexist with the permanent one when it's completed. It might be in place while the permanent one's being constructed. But it's not be in place together with the finished permanent skate park unless Jesse wants to add anything.
No, the, the only thing I would say to that is at, at least it's not anticipated to go in the exact same location. It will go on lot seven, but most likely on the other side where the original EIR studied the project.
Okay.
Still too, too determined.
The reason I asked, I brought this up is, there's nothing in this uh, resolution that ever requires it to go away. And I think that was the clear intention of the city council. So I was gonna propose we add it into the resolution that it be removed when a permanent skate park is installed on Bluffs Park. And you tell me if this is okay, Jeffy. Five year, or five years, whichever is sooner. Now, what I don't want it to have is a situation where we have where somebody comes along and says, okay, we're gonna have two of them, or something else happens and it never gets it's wood, it's gonna fall apart. So there's gotta be an end. It can't go to the, with the land, in my opinion, forever. Do you have any comments on that?
Uh, I would say it is not our intention for it to be permanent. And I think if anybody that's followed the project knows, we've called it the temporary skate park for, for that specific reason. I know that's council, I, I believe that's council's intention with what we, what we've discussed over the past several months. So um, I will say that the skate park itself, it will hold up longer than a couple of years. If, if for some reason it takes another six months for some reason for the project to get completed, that skate park will hold up. Um, there is a chance we would have to make minor repairs if we did so. But I I don't know that I would, I would say let's put a time limit on it, but I also, that's, that's not my area of expertise. I would say, well, the plan is not for it to be there for five years, so.
Bonnie?
Bonnie? If I could, I, I would just add also that we all work at the direction of the city manager and the city council. So if they wanted to do anything different with the temporary skate park for, you know, for some reason the permanent skate park, it, it, it's just, it's all, the, the council holds all the power here. So I don't feel that there's a need to put a time limit on it. And if we did put a time limit on it and something were to change, then we would end up in a position where we have to bring back an amendment to deal with that situation. So my recommendation would be not to address that and just rely on the council to direct us.
Well.
Excuse me, John. Excuse me. David, David had his hand up.
I, I'm just confused again, as I've been for the last two, as to what the scope is of what we're doing. I thought we were being asked to consider putting trees in a temporary skate park. Now, John is extending this conversation to how many years the park should be there, which I don't understand how that has anything to do with what it is we're being asked to do. I mean, isn't that a city council? I, I guess I'm just reiterating what Bonnie just said. Aren't we going beyond what it is we've been charged with doing here?
Can I answer that?
I
Sure, go ahead.
What we're proposing to do is, is this is a temporary design. For example, all of these trees are in boxes. Okay, they're all supposed to be eight feet. Well, anybody who grows a tree in a box knows the boxes explode after a while. Okay? So you're, you're providing if it's a regular CDP, it goes with the land and it goes for the next thousand years. Okay? And our intention here is to do what's there for now. And we are considering the trees. All we're, all I'm saying is the things we're doing are temporary.
Okay, so John, let me get Trevor, he's got his hand up. Trevor?
Yeah, so this CDP, what we're looking at here is not the use of the park, which is by right here, but just the development that's put on the lot. And there isn't any time limit put in the application. So if we were gonna impose some kind of time limit, we would have to have some kind of nexus and proportionality, a reason why we would be doing that. Um, so what you're putting in here is just a straight approval for these, these items to be placed on the lot. That's where we're at right now. And if you want to condition the, the, a time limit on it, then we would need to have some kind of justification to that besides the council just saying that, you know, it was a temporary park that we would need more than that.
For what it's worth, I, I agree with John that, that the height limit ought to be measured from grade level and what was the first, what was the first thing? I just had it in my mind, that
The trees were temporary? I mean, that, that they were optional, they were not required?
They're optional and not required. Uh, and with those two, I, I think that Bonnie and Trevor made a good argument that basically we're not the city council. We did, you remind yourselves that city council controls this. So I think the two elements that, that you mentioned, John, are appropriate. But can I get a motion from somebody? We're approaching
I'll make that motion.
All right, John.
I'll make that, that we adopt city council resolution with the addition of on item two A, item seven and item eight. We add the words from finished grade after the eight feet.
Okay.
It's actually B. I think you mean U B on, for the height from finished grade.
It would be for both A and B since they're both the freestanding trees and the ones along the property line.
Yeah, all of those.
And number seven below that also.
Yeah, seven and eight.
Could it be fair to say, John, to, to maybe staff's recommendation, but then to amend to require all tree heights to be measured from the finished grade?
Correct.
Just in case there's any other adjustments?
Any other things. Then you tell me how I add this
Trevor has
Okay, what I was suggesting before was that you would add a condition that would state that the potted trees are allowed but not required by this CDP. Was that
Okay, that's part of my motion. Anybody else want to make any changes?
Steve, we got
With that motion, what, what we're doing is pushing the trees back on Scott Gillen. That's what that is intended to do?
No, what it does is allow the city to decide if they don't feel they have the finances or the need or that they were suckered into the deal. I don't want to make that in the resolution. They were suckered in the deal and now they have to pay for this for the next twenty years. They could just change their mind.
So the city's got the option of not, if, if somebody else doesn't want to put the trees in and take care of it, the city's got the option to say no.
Exactly.
I, I just want to clarify that it's, that what you're actually finding here is not any type, you're not weighing into this deal, the deals between the city and developer.
No, I'm just saying.
I, I just clarify for the record that you're finding that if the city wants to put those trees in, that that, that you can make the coastal development permit findings for it, they would be appropriate, but they're not required for you to make the overall findings for the project. Thus
Correct.
Go in, they don't have to go in.
Chris, Chris.
Just a couple of quick ones. Um, I know it's implied, but is there, would the applicant have the right to take the trees out of the pots and still keep them at eight feet, you know, per this? Or, I mean, is it just implicit that they have to remain in the pots?
We are the applicant.
They
It's the applicant.
Good point.
Yeah, they would remain in the pots.
Okay, um, and then there was some discussion before about kind of the development envelope. I just wanted to clarify what I took away from that. Um, the envelope's exactly the same. The impermeable is the same, just kind of the line between parking lot and skate area has been shifted into the skate area. Is that right?
Do you want to take that, Jesse?
I, yeah, if you could, I guess I, if you could clarify, are you just asking was the skate park itself just shifted over?
Well, I just want to make, there are two items which I want to make sure are the same. So like the, the footprint of the overall project, no matter how it's developed, that line stays the same around the perimeter. Yeah?
Yeah, as far as that, so let me tell you, so the asphalt itself, the amount of asphalt actually reduced.
Okay.
It shifted, oh, like it, it basically, we kind of condensed it down and took that twenty feet off that edge. And what we did was we shifted the skate park itself into what was the old drop off pickup area because we had so much extra room there. It was a massive drop off pickup area. So we really lost some asphalt. We lost about twenty feet of asphalt from
Okay. So same footprint of the project, smaller impermeable coverage in terms of impact.
Correct, and, and I, if I recall the number correctly, I believe the skate park itself was reduced by a couple hundred square feet. It, it was reduced based on, on the reduction because uh, when we reduced that one section, uh, we also brought the asphalt away from the wall a little bit.
Okay.
So that we had a little bit, we had a two foot gap between the concrete wall that's in place and the asphalt that's there. So the skate park itself did actually reduce in size a little bit in size as we shifted it too.
Got it. And then the last question, I think more directed to Bonnie. Um, since this is an eight foot fence, which isn't the norm, six foot is the norm, should this have been handled through a variance or not? Just, just for clarification.
This, this particular development, the Crummer slash Case project has its own overlay standard and lot seven in, in particular has uh, has eight foot fence height limits because it was intended to be used for recreation when it was donated to the city. So it does have special fence requirements. So we did not have to do that for this hedge.
Thank you for clarifying and that's all I had.
Okay, so we've got Steve.
One last, we never got the money from Scott Gillen, is that correct?
Uh, it is my understanding we have not received that check yet.
Go ahead.
That's John's motion. I, I don't know whether we have a second or not if we all right, now we have a second. Is there further discussion? And Trevor, you've got your hand up.
Just to, I just want to clarify everyone's where they're voting on here. This is the staff's recommendation with the following alterations. First, that um, the height of the trees is limited to eight feet from finished grade and the resolution will be, will be adjusted to reflect that condition in wherever required. And on top of that, a condition will be added stating to the effect that the potted trees are permitted by this, by this permit but are not required. Does that actually reflect your motion?
Yes. And Steve, that
Yeah, I got no problem. I'll second that.
Okay, all right. So Kathleen, could you call the roll, please?
Vice Chair Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That concludes that, Adam. I think I need a motion to adjourn, don't I?
Adjourn?
Um, let's, let's just all say, say it together. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Be in late July.
Yeah, thanks everyone.
Bye.